The Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, September 21st, 2017. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harlecker, would you please call the room?
Yeah. Commissioner Knoblock.
President.
Commissioner Heikleth.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Here.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Here.
Chair Schwartz.
Here.
The minutes show that Commissioner Stevens is absent tonight.
Thank you. Our first duty this evening is to adopt the agenda.
Absolutely.
Second. Motion by Stevenson, second by Knoblock. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of our minutes from our August 17th meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Heikleth.
I move to approve the minutes from the August 17th meeting.
Second.
Motion by Heikleth, second by Schmalki. Any corrections or changes, additions? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we have one abstention, Commissioner Stevenson. Our first order of business this evening under new business is planning case 17-27, a conditional use permit for a place of worship at 11640 Crooked Lake Boulevard, North Star Church. Mr. Harlecker.
If you could, I'll power on the petition up, please. The applicant is proposing to utilize the American Legion located at Crooked Lake Boulevard and Northdale Boulevard and use it as a church, place of worship. The applicant is North Star Church. It will be occupying the entire building. Initially, the applicant will be making cosmetic improvements to the interior of the building or they will be contacting the building department to check if they need what building permits they will not need. The applicant is not proposing to do any work to the site. Here's a site plan, here's the structure here and the parking lot out here. There are some areas of the parking lot that need to be repaired. One of the conditions, staff's recommendations are, is a condition that the parking lot be repaired, resurfaced as needed. Also, as part of the condition of use permit, staff is recommending that the landscaping around Crooked Lake Boulevard and Northdale Boulevard be brought into compliance with current code. That would mean installing six overstory trees and 46 shrubs along Northdale and 36 or 30 shrubs along Crooked Lake Boulevard. As you can see from the air photo, there are trees along Crooked Lake, there are trees out in the parking lot islands, but they're lacking along Northdale Boulevard here. Parking lot is 214 spaces, which provides adequate parking for the proposed church. Parking is required at one space for every four seats. The occupancy of the worship area here is 300 people. The applicant is, at this point, is looking at 100 to 120 people in the sanctuary. A 300-seat sanctuary would require 75 spaces. They've got more than adequate parking to meet their needs. This is the floor plan with the front entrance out here. This is the sanctuary area here, and this is what the parking calculations are based on. And this area over here is more of a reception area. The applicant is not proposing any significant changes to the exterior of the building other than painting portions of it to match the existing gray that's out there. With respect to signage, there is a freestanding sign at this corner here. It does not meet current standards with respect to setback and probably not the size. They aren't proposing a new sign. What they are proposing is to reface the existing sign, and that would not require them to move the sign and bring it into compliance with current code if they're just swapping out the faces. At this point, they are not proposing any wall signage on the church. Should they desire signage in the future, they'd have to come in and get the appropriate sign permits. With that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the condition that compliance with City Code Title 11, the parking lot must be repaired, resurfaced, and restriped as needed. The applicant plants six overstory trees and 46 shrubs along Northdale and 30 shrubs along Crooked Lake Boulevard. And modifications to the freestanding sign, other than changing the face, will require bringing the sign into compliance with current code. Sign permit is required for changing the face of the freestanding sign, however. And any new wall sign here will require separate sign permits. With that, I'll answer any questions, and the applicant is also in the audience tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
The applicant, where are they meeting at?
They were meeting at, was it Redeemer? And that building was sold, so that necessitated them finding a new location.
Any other questions, Commissioner, Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Mr. Harlecker, will the painting and the plantings be done yet this year? Is the time going to run out on this?
Commissioner Casey, we're probably looking at next year for the installation of the landscaping, and we might be able to get some of the parking lot improvements in yet this year, but probably next year.
Thank you.
Is there anything the petitioner would like to add at this time? All right. All right, we'll open a public hearing in this matter, planning case 1727, a conditional use permit for a place of worship. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in this case, please come up to the microphone, give your name and your address, please.
My name is Laura Blue. I live at 11227 Crocus Street Northwest, Coon Rapids. I'm here, I guess, I've been a resident of Anoka County since I was the age of 15. I've lived in the city of Coon Rapids since the age of, well, 31 years I've been there. I've been an employee and a volunteer at the American Legion. I don't have an issue per se of a church going in there. I'm looking at as that we have, and there's two total veterans organizations in the city of Coon Rapids. One that is the American Legion and one is the Veterans of Forum Wars. I was unable to serve in this service because of health-wise, but I've been a strong volunteer for the 31 years I've been involved in the American Legion. And my issue is that the veterans are going to run out of places to go. And we are left with, the problem is, we've checked in the city of Coon Rapids to find a new building because we have to stay in the city of Coon Rapids, which is a great place. But in order to be able to have the money and the cost to carry on as the American Legion, we have to find a place that we can buy, not lease. Because of our gambling laws, we have to be able to take the money from that, and we can put it towards the purchase, but we cannot put it towards the leasing of property. And there's a lot of other people that I know have the same issues. And we've tried several times to come up with different ideas, different options we might use. Unfortunately, we do have a board, and we don't always agree, but as an employee and just a member, we have people that we have to answer to. And it's too bad that some of the communication did get out that we should have early enough, but like I said, we don't really have a lot of options. I hate to see the Legion go away because we are a veterans organization, and I'm one of five generations who has supported the American Legion in Coon Rapids. My family has grown up in there. I have a grandson who's two, is a member now, and he may not do a lot there, but he does what he can. And I really think that we need to look at something that, an option that we could serve our veterans well and get a place for us in Coon Rapids still. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in public hearing? Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commission, your thoughts and/or actions.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I certainly hope that the Legion stays in Coon Rapids, and, you know, I've enjoyed various events and things that have happened at the current site. They've made a decision to move out, and it's not anything we have control over, and this plan seems like it fits with the code and with our prerogative, and so I'm in favor of it. And there's no other comments, I'll move to adopt the recommendations of the report that in planning case 1727, the commission moved to approve the conditional use permit for a place of worship with the conditions stated in the memorandum.
Second.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Casey. Any further discussion?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
To the applicant, to members of the Coon Rapids Foreign Legion, I would beg to say to consider approaching City Council for possible options or resolutions. It doesn't hurt to ask, but it's, I think it's, if it's worthwhile enough, I think it's worthwhile to make the approach and the request. So please take that into consideration. That's all I have to add.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikleth.
I also agree with Commissioner Stevenson and Mr. Knoblock in kind of a personal, we had our wedding reception there many, many years ago. We met at the ground round on Coon Rapids Boulevard, which is no longer there, and we got, had a wedding reception at the Coon Rapids Legion, and I hate to see it go as well, but it is something beyond our control, certainly.
Correct. Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the Planning Commission and can be appealed to the City Council within 10 days if someone chooses to do so. Thank you, and good luck. All right, next we have planning case 17-26, a new car dealership, Gateway Commerce Center, Phillips Architects. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes. This is a proposed site plan in the Gateway Commerce Center PUD. Wallston Nissan is proposing to construct a 43,400 square foot building with 762 parking spaces. The site is here at the end of the cul-de-sac. A piece of the existing cul-de-sac will be removed as part of this application, and the cul-de-sac is being shortened to the proposed location here. The original PUD was approved in 2007, and then in 2016 was amended to allow the proposed car dealership. Looking at the standards for the site plan as well as the design standards for the PUD, looking at the circulation, and here's the site plan. The parking, drive aisles are wide enough to allow sufficient traffic. They have submitted a circulation plan for trucks that shows how fire trucks and the semi-tractor trailers can get through the site and drop off the cars. Pedestrian access, there's a sidewalk that will be connected to the one that will be constructed as part of the Honda site plan at this location here. It will be extended down along the highway here, and then instead of going out to the back of the site, we're going to have it laid out so it loops around the infiltration basin here and then goes out to the property line at this point for future connection to the north. There will be crosswalks where the sidewalk does cross the two access drives going into The land use was approved as part of the PUD amendment last year, and it is consistent with that amendment. Public spaces, the outdoor area near the main entrance should be revised to accommodate an outdoor seating track. The main entrance to the building is right here. Landscaping and screening, let's stay with the site plan for a moment here. The site plan as proposed has the drive aisles parallel to Highway 10 in this area here. As you can see from the approved PUD plan, they actually had the parking layout perpendicular to the highway. This area here, as well as around the parking lot, is consistent with the PUD plan. In order to break up the parking and give the area an appearance of the perpendicular drive aisles, the applicant has proposed five landscaped islands here, 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 and then here, then also on the second row here to break up that parking. The area here is an infiltration basin, and that too will be landscaped with birch trees, so that'll really soften the impact of that parking lot, really dividing it in two. Then they've got landscaped islands in the back of the parking lot here. So I think even though the design is different from what was on the approved plan, I think the design here, along with the landscaping, should mitigate that change in design. The building here is 43,400 square feet. The PUD had a building that was 60,000 square feet, so it's a smaller building, but as you can see from the PUD plan, it is in a similar location and oriented the same way. And I think the applicant, as part of the landscape plan, increased the landscaping in the parking lot to offset the increased asphalt that having a smaller building allows. So from a staff's perspective, the building size is okay. For a comparison, the Honda dealership is a 56,000 square foot building. Access points here on the cul-de-sac, there's one here and another one here. Parking for customers is across the front and over here, employee parking across the back, and then service parking over here. The remainder of the site across the front and back in here is for inventory. With the grading plan, you can see the infiltration pond here. They've got the infiltration pond along through here where the landscaping will be. Then there's a smaller one up front here by the entrance off the cul-de-sac. The grading plan, the landscaped islands really stand out in this case. You can see them across the front here, and then the landscaped infiltration area, and then the landscaping to the back. They've got evergreen trees along this area here behind the building, then overstory trees here and along in between to break up this parking lot from the one with the Honda dealership. This will include a landscaping then around the infiltration down here, infiltration pond, and then they've got them along the front here. There's one deviation from the PUD landscape plan. Along this stretch here, they've had 16 overstory trees on the proposed plan here. They do have them extended all the way down, but they're short, six trees, there's only 10 proposed. They do have ornamental trees spaced in between them here, but nothing is proposed along here. So staff is recommending that the additional trees be planted along here. This is what the approved landscape plan looks like. As you can see, they've had the overstory trees all the way down to the edge of the cul-de-sac, landscaping across the back, around the pond, and then in between the two Here's what the proposed building will look like. It's a mix of concrete precast panels and glass across the front. They've got a dark gray, mostly light black brick proposed as accents between the overhead doors in various locations around the building. They also have a silver architectural metal panel across the top, as well as a gray architectural metal panel. This is the elevation that is considered the front. The entrance here is highlighted by the big Nissan emblem, and then extends out from the front facade there to accent it. There are breaks in the roof elevations here to kind of break up the building, and as you can see from the footprint here, there are quite a few breaks in the building, so it's not just one big long facade. This is the north elevation. This faces the wetlands in back. These here are the precast panels for the most part. All the overhead doors, with the exception of the door that'll access the trash and recycling area, are glass. Some of them are high-speed glass, but they are all glass, glass doors. Here's colored building elevations. This is the front with the glass and the brick accents in the corners and here. This is the east elevation. Right here, as you're coming down Gateway Drive, again, you've got the brick accent along in here. And then this is the west elevation that faces the parking lot on the west side of the building. That would be the west side right here, and that would be the east. See, these are the precast panels with the silver architectural metal panels. Here's the floor plan of the building with the front here. This would be the west elevation. Service area here, and they've got glass windows on here, and this would be cars that could be used as rentals or replacement cars for customers that have cars in for service in the showroom out front and the service area to the rear. With the building elevations, the planning commission, they're really, this is kind of a different type of brick material than what was used on some of the other buildings. All of the existing buildings, the McDonald's, Taco Bell, Holiday, they all have various brick colors on them, some more distinct than others, but they all have a mix, whereas this is a, the darker brick shown there. Let the architect be able to give a better explanation of materials. Staff is asking that the commissioner, just to emphasize, as part of this approval process, since this is kind of a different material than what was used on previous buildings, that they pay particular attention to it. And if they're not satisfied, if you're not satisfied with or like another material, let the applicant know, and we can take it from there. There is an appeal process available to the applicant if they want to appeal the commission's decision or any other recommendations. But I think the colors blend in nicely and work nicely together. The other item is the signage. The PUD allows a 28-foot monument sign for this site. Be 14 feet wide, and the backlit area cannot exceed 180 square feet. And the sign must be set back 50 feet from the right-of-way. The proposed sign is 25 feet high, approximately eight feet wide. It'll be located 66 feet from the right-of-way. The size of the backlit area is approximately 84 square feet. The design parameters in the PUD include being the same color palette and materials as the architecture of the center. Stack stone is preferred. What they are proposing here is the architectural metal panel, similar to what's being used on the building. The freestanding sign will require a separate permit. One of the conditions of staff's recommendation is that the proposed ground sign be revised so that its base is similar material to those used in the other ground signs in the PUD. Those materials include a brick of different colors, usually a, there are bricks that matches what's on the building, or else a stacked stone. So this is really a new sign design for this PUD that is being proposed. The lighting for the site is consistent with lighting fixtures used in other areas of the PUD. Fixtures should be the same height as those on the adjacent lot. Along the sidewalk here will be pedestrian scale lighting extending all the way around and then out to where it ties in, it stops at the back of the sites here. So that whole length will be illuminated by pedestrian scale lighting, similar to what's out there, kind of the craftsman-style lighting. Let me go over the recommendation conditions. Planning condition, move to approve the proposed site plan with the conditions that it is in compliance with Title 11. it is in compliance with Title XI. The applicant provide an easement for the sidewalk across their lot. The sidewalk here is actually on the applicant's property. The outdoor area near the main entrance be revised to accommodate outdoor seating. All comments of the city engineer be addressed. All comments from Minut be addressed. The applicant enter into a site security agreement. The applicant receive all the necessary permits from Coon Creek Watershed. Bike rack be provided. The PUD plan includes sixteen overstory with ornamental trees planted between them. The landscape plan be revised to continue that pattern from the west end of the parking lot to the end of the cul-de-sac. Stormwater pond must include a fountain for the PUD approval. If you noticed, I handed out tonight the applicant's response to these conditions, and he did note that this is actually a dry pond, and there will not be standing water in it, so it's rather difficult to provide a pound fountain in a pond that doesn't exist. So staff is comfortable eliminating condition number ten with the stormwater pond and the fountain. The ground sign and wall signs require separate permits. The proposed ground sign be revised so that the base is similar material to that used on other ground signs in the PUD. And the location of the sidewalk be adjusted so it's on the west side of the infiltration basin, and the western light, which is out at this end, be relocated to the new location along the sidewalk. With that, staff will answer any questions. I know the applicant is in the audience tonight and like to have an opportunity to speak to the commission.
Mr. Harlecker, that last condition that you were just read, excuse me, talks about the sidewalk being adjusted to the west side of the infiltration basin. Don't you mean the east side of the basin?
Well, this is the basin here.
Oh.
Right now, the sidewalk goes out this direction.
To the west side of the basin?
We're recommending that it kind of go, follow the western edge.
Oh, to the western edge of it, I see. It's stood all the way to the, okay.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
I have a question for Mr. Harlecker. I have a question regarding, one to confirm, that is Walzer Nissan the owner of the existing distri, this shop that's right beside Carter Chevrolet?
I'll let the applicant address that question.
Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The question is, the existing Nissan dealership, which is located off of Ten, right across the street from the old Sears, right beside Carter Chevrolet, is that owned by the same entity? And if so, will that entity be closed and transferred operation over to?
Yeah, come on to my.
Please give your name when you come to the microphone.
My name is David Phillips. I'm the architect for Walzer. The correct answer is it's going to be owned by one of Walzer's entities. They have different LLCs that own different real estate, but you could consider it the same owner. So yes, both properties will be the same owner. It is not our intent to close that building. We are, once, once we have a new site for Nissan which needs more room, we will seek another dealership for that, but we will keep it open in all cases, either as a used car express-type dealership, which we don't want to do, but, you know, I don't want to start any rumors. There are other dealerships that aren't represented up north here that need smaller facilities than what our new Nissan will be, so we will, we expect that we'll have a new dealership, but in all cases, we'll keep it open, and there'll be employees at both sites.
Well, thank you. That's very illuminating and it's helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't Coon Rapids have an ordinance against just specifically a used car dealership?
Chair Schwartz, that's true. Mr. Harlecker may want to elaborate on that, but as far as I know, you can't have just a freestanding used car dealership.
And I don't want to misspeak for Walzer. We have no intent to not have all the proper approvals, you know.
Commission, any other questions for Mr. Harlecker at this time?
Mr. Chair.
We'll go with Commissioner Stevenson first.
So the sidewalk exists, is that correct already? Is it already there?
Mr. Stevenson, I don't believe it does.
Okay, so what's the purpose of having a sidewalk going out around an infiltration pond? Is there, there's not a trail out there or anything to connect to?
Well, the long-range plan for this PUD has a pond going across, well, you can see it here, going across the pond, and then back along the backside of this PUD around the wetlands.
Okay, but that was what was contemplated, there'd be a lot of other uses back there, right? Like hotels and aquatic facility. Is there, I'm just wondering, what's the purpose of having a sidewalk going behind a pond at the end of a car dealership?
Well, it does provide an area for people to walk, if they want to go out and walk during lunch. It was included in the PUD, and there was as part of that approval, a land, a trail extending along back, along the back of the development here, and then tying in over by the Taco Bell.
But is that trail going?
The trail is not in yet. Timing of it, I don't, I'm not sure what the timing is for that.
I don't, how, how would it happen other than through, because there's no other developable lots at the, at the end there, right?
This is. This is.
So how, how can, I guess the question is kind of twofold. How can we require them to build the trail other than now, when they're trying to build the land?
Right.
Maybe it's just onefold, because I guess the second question is, if you're not going to make them build the trail there, why are we building the sidewalk? Let's start with this, why aren't we asking them to build the trail?
Off their property?
Behind it. I mean, it's part of, if it's part of what was contemplated for this development.
That was always intended to be a city project. It's off-site from this.
I see. I see. And so the idea is that the sidewalk will connect to the city?
These developers are pulling a sidewalk trail along Gateway, so at some point, it'll connect into the trail behind it that will be installed by the city.
Okay. Second question. Can you clarify for me what constitutes an overstory tree, particularly as to, are the white pines, is a row of white pines that they're putting on the north end of the property? Are those, are those overstory trees or ornamental?
Those would be considered evergreens. Landscaping ordinance is broken up into overstory trees, maples, oaks, birch trees, those type of things, hackberries. Then we've got evergreen trees, and then the smaller ornamentals, crab apples, service berry, things like those.
Okay. So those evergreens that are on the back count against neither the overstory nor the ornamental
They count because they were intended to screen the back. I don't know the breakdown that the applicant gave in the, in the handout I gave that they presented earlier today. They have the ornament, or they have the evergreen and shade trees grouped together.
Well, I see they have, that's why I'm asking.
They didn't break it up.
They have trees up at the top, conifers, and then ornamental trees. And most of the conifers appear to be these white pines in the back, and I'm wondering, are we counting those as part of the requirement for overstory trees?
I, I didn't. What I was looking at for overstory trees is across the front here.
Right.
They've got significant landscaping throughout the site. You know, there's really not any place to put anymore.
Other than along?
Other than the long one through here. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Haikla.
Kind of following up a little bit on Mr., on the previous person's question here. Are the trees going to be in the front of the walking area, or will they be?
Behind.
The walking area will be behind those trees?
Yeah, you'd have the sidewalk, you'd have the highway right-of-way, the sidewalk, and then the landscaping, and then the parking lot.
No, but I mean, in the back, on the north side of the, where the trees are on the north side.
Up here?
Yeah.
They'd be back off, off the site.
What you're saying is eventually they were planning to have a trail back there.
Right.
That'll be behind the trees.
Behind the trees, correct.
Okay. The second question, or kind of a comment, is, and I mentioned this last time, is the proposed seating area, if we can have a little more detail on, so it doesn't end up simply being a picnic table. If we can have like a little, something a little classier than a picnic table, you know?
Yep.
Sitting there, like a little patio or something like that.
I think we can direct that to the applicant, see if we can get a commitment from them.
Is there any chance that we?
Do you want me to interrupt, or do you want to finish with Scott? I'm happy to get up and answer.
You can come up to the microphone and answer.
My question is, I'm wondering if there's any chance that we can have a little more detail in the seating area, so we don't simply end up with a picnic table? If we can have?
I, I promise you that I have to meet a Nissan standard that would not allow a trashy-looking front. It will be very architectural, and it will be to a high standard. We have no objection to the bike rack, although we're a car dealer, and we have no objection to seating out in that plaza area, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Haikla, the details of that will be submitted when, when they submit for a building permit, so we can double-check and make sure of the quality of the seating
Commission, any other questions at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Mr. Harlecker, school me on a rain garden versus, you've mentioned landscape basin. Is that a rain garden? Are we talking the same thing? And I, I'm looking at the landscape plan up on the monitors, and show me where that's going to be. I need to go to school on this a little bit.
Yeah, Commissioner Casey, they have it listed as an infiltration basin. They're very similar. Different terms for essentially the same thing.
Is it a depressed area?
It's, it's kind of a low area with specialized soils and.
Drainage.
And drainage, so it's able to take water, soak it in, and then convey it off-site when it soaks down through pipes and into the pond area. So it's not, it's not a standing, there's no standing water on any of the infiltration or drainage areas on the site.
Okay. And then on the, when they changed the parking to make it the aisles perpendicular to Highway Ten?
Mm-hmm.
That's going, that landscape basin is going to run right through the middle of that?
Correct, as it's shown on here. You've got a section of parking in front. You've got landscape infiltration basin here, and then another section of parking behind
Okay. I have one more question on this little narrative, your, the little email that came late. Do you think that, was the applicant reluctant to put more ornamental trees in front of the building itself for visibility reasons? Or, you know, they, they staggered them, ornamental trees, overstory trees, all along the parking area, the inventory lot, but then they're gonna, they're gonna go ahead and put ornamental trees in between these, or was there a visibility?
Hi. Let me, Commissioner Casey, that's staff's recommendation, is that this, this pattern that they've got up here be continued along here, and that they put some additional trees in, you know, for instance, there's probably room here, there's probably room for a couple overstory trees on either side of the sidewalk, and then if they space them closer, they can probably get three more in, maybe put another, shift these that way and put another one down on this end. So that's, that's what staff's thinking was on this.
And then for the applicant, is, that's not a visibility issue?
Of course it is.
Some.
We, we have on this landscape plan more shrubs, more trees, more islands, more breaking up of our parking lot, and of course, we'd like this very expensive new building to have a little more visibility from Highway Ten, but we're not shorting on the landscaping. This, our plan exceeds the counts of last year that was okay, so we're, and, and, and we don't have an objection to adding six trees, but I'd rather, if, if I had my druthers, no, I really don't want to put more than the four or five that we have in front of the building right now.
Understood.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips, can you explain what's, what's going to be planted in between these trees? Do you know?
It, it would be lower, you know, native grasses.
Okay.
Oh.
It would, you know, the columnar grass that you see and the day lilies.
So it won't be ornamental trees in between?
I, I would rather have, have overstory trees and, and grasses and flowering plants. Mr. Walzer prefers some color in that landscaping in front of the building, so it's not that it'll be just grass, but there'll be organized landscape that we'll put there.
Thank you.
And commission, any other questions at this time?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblauch.
I make the recommendation in case.
Oh, no, we're not ready for that yet. Not, not even close yet.
All right. And I, I reverse that beginning sentence.
All right, Mr. Phillips, as long as you're there, is there a presentation you'd like to make?
I, I'm, I'm mostly here to answer questions. We can talk about the exterior materials of the building, and perhaps we want to start there.
Sure.
The, that much happened, so. The precast is in eight-foot wide panels, so you get a vertical joint every eight feet, no matter what you do. What we do is we cast it with an architectural face, so you get a horizontal joint if we could, if we could put a.
Be the brick.
Yeah, and, and the brick. And that, so you don't just have a slab of great concrete there. Can we put up the elevations? The colored one's probably the best. Yeah. If, if you look in the colored, colored areas, you'll see the horizontal lines there. That's this line here, and it does show up from quite a distance. It casts a different shadow. It gives a really, really pleasant feel. It's not natural concrete color, as you can see, it's, it's colored. Normally Nissan would have, I think we're in the gray, this gray is supposed to be where we have brick.
Okay.
Normally Nissan would have metal. Here, I can use my mouse. We have brick piers all the way around, both the east side and the west side areas. The west side is a room where we deliver new cars out of, and they drive out. The east side is where all our service customers would, would come in, and as Mr. Harlecker said, we would have staged rental cars there. In the evening, we might stage completed service, so if it's a raining night, you pick up your car inside. In lieu of the metal that Nissan would want, we're proposing a brick piers. It's in a compatible color palette to the rest of the building. We have, the brick will all have a silver metal fascia. What, what isn't as apparent on these elevations is there's a fifteen-foot overhang over this glass out here on, yeah, you can, you can kind of see it here. It starts way back here is the glass. We have the vestibule projected, and we have an overhang here. That overhang does two things. It'll give nice shadowing, helps break up just a flat surface of a building, and it also will give some. also will give some natural sun protection, we have kind of a south and west facing there, so it, it adds somewhat to the economy. Nissan has never done this, I had to go to Nissan, and, and they think it's an enhancement to their basic design, their basic design would just have the glass straight up with the fascia on top of it, and they, they actually, I, I, I'll, I'll take a little hit here, I'll brag a little bit, they complimented me, and they may incorporate the projecting vestibule and the, the overhangs into their revised design there. I think when they see this building, they'll add brick around the country instead. I, I like the brick better than having the metal come down to the ground, and, but, but all this brick will have a, a silver ACM fascia above it, and these are. Yeah, these, these buildings are, are very expensive, I built both the buildings that are up there, the, it was built as a Toyota, but it's the Buick, and the current Nissan that, that never opened as an Osmobile, we were building it for Osmobile when they closed the franchise, and compared to those, these buildings even adjusted for inflation are just twice as expensive, the factories have a much higher standard, you've probably heard that from your Honda dealer, they, they have a very high standard, our, we're all LED lighting, we're very concerned about energy and usage on lighting, the way we control the parking lot is, it's all, all the poles have a radio controller on them, so we can individually adjust any pole in the parking lot, we like to bring them all down to a 10% light at night, and have a motion sensor, so we think it helps both us for security and your police department, if it's 3:00 AM, the, the lot will have a very low level of security lighting, but if somebody's in there, maybe looking at a car, or maybe causing mischief, it will bring up those LED lights unlike the metal halide that we've used, and you see all over town, the LED come up right away, they don't take 20 minutes to warm up and turn on, so it's, it's funny, I have people that will take a tour of one of our lots that we've done, and we'll go there after dark when it's all, all lot, and as we drive around, you'll just see the lights turn on, and they'll follow you around the parking lot. But i- it's helpful, if your police see a bunch of lights on at, at 2:00 AM when they're driving by on Highway 10, it, it might alert them, we have, we have cameras on our own security, so we would notify them if we see activity that shouldn't be on the lot. But the, the buildings are, are, are expensive buildings, they're very high-quality materials, we have, on this one, I think we have 24 feet of glass, we have a curtain wall-type glass as opposed to windows, you see windows here are just framed, these are, these are heavy curtain walls, they have to take 90 mile-an-hour winds on the front, and I, I, I don't want to oversell yet, we, we think the brick is a high-quality material, and, and I think that it will become a national Nissan standard, if I'm allowed to put it on this building.
Is there any kind of color diagram of the north elevation, the, the back?
The back, if we go to the gray one here, the back is on each end, pardon me, on the west end, you have the brick and the silver, I mean, yeah, over here, you have the silver fascia, and you'll still have the brick, but that's set a little forward from here, all of these big panels here that you see are the precast, so it'll be the gray with the lines in it, lots of glass there, this is our, our car wash tunnel, and that will have glass, I apologize, I should have turned that off. The, uh, but, but this is predominantly the precast on the back with glass, as you, you never get a straight-on view, if you look from the east, you, if you look at the, from the east, and you're looking from this direction over here, you'll see a little bit of the brick here, but this is, the shop walls are precast and glass, we add glass, the car wash, I have two very large window walls in the car wash, it's actually, it's good for spraying down or drying a car, and it brings in natural light, and if you happen to be walking by, it's kind of interesting to watch them work there, too. All our doors, as indicated, except for the trash door, and I apologize, and also probably the parts delivery door, are, are full glass, not, not partial glass, but all sections are glass, the, the doors on the ride-up, to give you an idea of how much buildings cost nowadays, those six doors at the ride-up are about $200,000 for the six of them, they're high-speed, all glass doors, Honda will have, have those, or they told you're not, it's just, it's a competitive thing, once people get used to that door going up like that, they want it. We have, if you look at the ride-up, the east wall, which is the one you really see when you're driving into the building, we have large expanses of glass in that ride-up, it's not, it's not a second-class place, we, we deal with most of our customers on the east end of the building in that service ride-up, it, it will have high-quality finishes, we have all-glass walls from the service ride-up going into the showroom with automatic doors, it's just unlike any, even your newer dealerships for Ford and Chrysler, are, the design, designs have ratcheted up from there, on there, they wouldn't, they wouldn't meet the standards today on there, so. We like them open, and I think this, it's, it's good for the city, and it's good for us, the more glass, the better, in my opinion.
All right.
Chair Swartz.
Commissioner Navog.
Will you entertain a recommendation?
Not yet, we're still at that public hearing. In the parking area for the vehicles, are you anticipating having any display pads?
We are not, other than, I think there's room for one or two cars right by the building, both inside and out, you know, so you see them through the glass, and that would be in this area, and that may be the only area here, Walzer in general has given up on the idea of, of display pads on there, so we, we don't, I haven't been putting them in to the current plans.
All right. And as far as the, this, I won't call it a disagreement, but the differences on the monument sign from what you're proposing and what the city's staff is recommending, your thoughts on that?
The monument sign is leased from the factories to the dealers, they can't, they, they aren't allowed to own the brand sign anymore, and I would, I would defer to, they'll have to come in and make their own application, but this is the sign that, that that brand provides, they wouldn't be interested in tan stack stone on either side of it, it just, it doesn't go with the rest of the palette or building.
Then likewise, this doesn't go with the rest of our PUD?
It, it, I, I would agree that it's not like the McDonald's, or the Taco Bell, or the Holiday, but they're, even those are different, you know, one's got a reddish-brown brick, and they all have some stone, but I, I, I would submit that this is, this is a better material, I could ask them and see if they consider having me build a pier out of brick that they put their sign on top of, but I, I would, I would defer to that, I don't, I think they would do without the sign before they would put it on the, the stone piers. I, I can't, I can't speak 100% for Nissan, but they just, they just wouldn't do that, I think the biggest deviation I might be able to get them to do would be to make it brick, but then they worry about the brick on the freestanding pier, the, the maintenance of it, again, they want to own the signs, because they don't want, they don't want the dealer to allow a substandard sign, they replace these every five to 10 years, either from design, or as they weather, they want brand-new signs of their image, so, I, I'm, we just don't own the sign, I'm proposing the sign that Nissan provides and owns.
Thank you.
Commissioner Swartz and Mr. Phillips, this is the same material that's on the building, correct?
This would be that silver.
Silver.
Yeah. Panels, and it's, it's a consistent materials, the only, the only red we're allowed on the building is, they call it the tablet that's over the main entry, and the red on the signs, they don't want me to indiscriminately use red, they think it cheapens it if there's too much of it, you know?
All right, thank you. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, either one of you, is this, this sign, is that considered, considered the monument sign?
Commissioner Casey, yes it is. When they amended, the PUD was amended last year, the two dealerships are each allowed one of the larger monument signs, originally when this PUD was approved, there was two larger signs allowed, one for the hotel and one for the development, the Honda dealership was assigned the development sign, and this dealership was assigned the one that went to the hotel.
I should note that this sign is smaller than we would be allowed with the monument sign.
Yeah, they are allowed a 28-foot, and this is a.
25.
25.
Thank you.
All right, no other questions from the commission, we'll have our public hearing. This time I will open a public hearing in Plan Case 17-26, New Car Dealership and Gateway Commerce Center, anyone here for a public hearing on this matter? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
You know, in the, in the notes that we had, it's, and it's highlighted, so I think we ought to address it, the commission, commission should make a determination if the smaller building is a significant enough change to warrant city council consideration, is that something we need to address, and then, in addition, there's under the facade and materials portion, another direction to make a determination if the use of the dark gray black brick is a significant enough change from the PUD guidelines to warrant modifications.
Correct.
That's all I, I want to bring up, I, I don't, just some discussion about that.
Well, to begin, well, I'll start it off, I, I think the smaller building, I don't think that's that big of a deal, that it needs to go to the council for consideration, that's my thought, any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I, I agree, those two factors, the size of the building and the materials of the building itself, I don't have any quarrel with, I would like to maintain staff recommendations as to landscaping and to the sign, which is in the staff report, and I would oppose deleting those recommend, those conditions, as, which is what I think the applicant is asking for in their memorandum. The two are nine and 13. And those would be the two, if you look at the email, those are the two that the applicant doesn't like, the rest of them, the applicant has no problem with, I guess with the exception of maybe 10, which I think everyone's agreeing should be deleted, but.
Right.
As to nine and, and 13, I would oppose removing those recommendations, or those conditions.
I would, I would tend to agree with you, I think as far as the sign goes, we've got the PUD that's got requirements on what they want the signs to look like, and I think the fact that this is part of the PUD, their sign needs to go along with the PUD plan, and I agree also with the, with your comments on the landscaping, that the additional trees, as requested by staff, should, should be added. Other commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Regarding number nine, I think that, that we can adhere to that, I think that's, that's fairly standard and makes some sense, when it comes to the sign, I, I, I'm more willing to allow the applicant a little leeway, as long as it, it's certainly separated geographically from the very, you know, the Holiday Station, the McDonald's, it's at the other end of the development, and it kind of fits in with, I think that could be a nice look if they were able to do some of the black brick around there, I think it takes away from their brand if we ask them to do a stack stone kind of thing, you won't see other Nissan signs put on that base, so I think we're, we're kind of infringing on some of their business planning, so I, I'd be more inclined to give them a little leeway on the sign, although, is that gonna, I guess we address it here, but they have to apply for a separate sign, that kind of thing. At number 10, I think we are going to eliminate landscape, we can hold them to those standards, I think that would be, make sense, a certain portion of those trees die out anyway, over time, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schimmel.
I, I hate to be the lone person out here, but I guess in terms of the landscaping, looking at the plan, it, it feels like it's adequately landscaped, it's not like they're proposing to put nothing between those trees, they are trying to dress it up and put the prairie grass, which is a little taller, you know, other, I guess ornamental-type shrubs, so it's not like they're looking to keep it vacant, just trying to, you know, accommodate, I guess exposure to the front of the building the best that they can, considering that the rest of the, kind of that, the front of, is going to be really well landscaped with taller trees and so forth, so I know we, we have made some concessions in the past, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure why we want to hold so closely to this request here, I agree with, with your comments on the sign as well, I do think that, you know, I, I think we're, we're asking that there has to be a permit, right, applied for, so it's almost like it's out of your hands, I'm not quite sure what we're exactly ruling on in terms of the sign, since it doesn't seem like it's within the applicant's control of what they really do with the sign, so I'm a little confused on what we should do there, so those are my two comments.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Well, I think it is within the applicant's control, I mean, I think what they're saying is that, that Nissan might have some objection to what is required under, under the PUD, and might not allow their brand to be used that way, but, I mean, that's, that's their choice, right?
Then what happens, I guess, that's why maybe.
Well, I, well, I heard the applicant saying, I, I couldn't. Well, I heard the applicant say, and I, I could, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that Nissan, I mean, they're going to have three choices. They, they can appeal our decision to the city council. They can put in a sign consistent with the PUD or the applicant said they might just decide not to put up a monument sign, which, I mean, if that's the, if that's the choice they make, that's the choice they make, you know? And I, I don't have a problem with that. We, you know, we've kind of, we've been very flexible when it comes to the PUD, frankly, over my vote. And so I think there's something to be said for being, for, for being consistent and for sticking with the sign requirements. Those other applicants had to fashion signs that were consistent with the PUD and that might be inconsistent with what, what they would have done at their other sites. I don't see any reason why Nissan is a special case. I think that they can either fashion a sign that's consistent with the PUD or if they decide they don't want one, that's their choice too. And I actually think that beyond, I don't disagree that there's a lot of landscaping on the site, but I think when I look at this, it just looks kind of weird that it, it just stops. They have a pattern here and then it just stops right in front of the building. And again, I, I think, you know, we have, we set up the, the rules for what this should look like and, you know, I wasn't here last month when you guys did the Honda dealership. I'm, I don't know if, did you relax the amount of trees that Honda had to put in front of their facility?
I don't believe we did.
I don't think that was requested.
Yeah, but so I don't, I don't, let's have an even thing along the, along the highway there and require the same thing of Nissan that we required of Honda and have a uniform appearance down the, down the stretch.
I totally agree. And as far as the flexibility, we've already allowed the change from the PUD is from the design of the parking of the vehicles from horizontal to parallel. That's a change from the P, or PUD initially. So I, I think we are allowing some flexibility to the applicant, but otherwise I agree whole heartedly with the comments of Commissioner Stevenson.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering
Commissioner Heikler.
Because the, I don't recall what the Honda dealership had as far as the sign, if we required them to put it on a brick foundation.
Commissioner Heikler, they did not present sign plans.
Therefore, when they submit for a sign application, it will have to meet the design standards of the PUD. If not, the permit will be sent back to them.
Would you allow me to speak?
Go ahead.
I suspect, I've, I've done a lot of car dealers over the years. The reason Honda didn't bring in a sign is, again, the dealership doesn't own the sign. So they may have decided not to muddy the waters by showing you what Honda wants there. And should, so it's, as, as far as the landscaping, I didn't want to make too big a deal out. I don't, if, if you want the additional trees, we'll, we'll get them in there. I, I, it's not a cost issue. It's, I, I don't want, I don't want that to drive the discussion. You should feel comfortable approving that. I would appreciate what the other items you've said. As far as any sign, I would defer, if, if you feel you can't approve the sign, I would, it'll be Nissan that will appeal it, but they might be sometime in the future before they get back to addressing it with the city. They'll come in, they have to pull a sign permit. Their, their company, if they want a variance from the standard, will ask for it again at that time. Again, since I don't own the sign, I just, I really can't. All I can tell you is this is what we want to put up and if it's, deviates from that, it has to be Nissan that, that has that discussion with you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, would it be appropriate then to just remove number 13 altogether as a condition?
No, I think we can still leave it.
When we say proposed ground sign?
Well, at this point, they have proposed a ground sign.
But is it, should that be changed to monument sign? Is that what I?
The monument sign is a ground sign.
Commissioner
As opposed to a sign, sign adjourned in the building. It's a ground sign.
Right.
I prefer the more generic and general ground sign.
Okay, all right. So that should just stay in there? I'm just wondering if it
Yeah, Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Casey. I think it's important that we leave that in there. They have proposed the sign. This way they're aware of what the commission's
Requested.
Decision is on this. And maybe, Mr. Johnson, you can elaborate on this. Now, they can appeal this condition, correct, to the city, to the city council within, within 10 days. If they decide not to appeal this and come in next summer with a permit that's with the metal base, can they then appeal staff's determination if they chose not to do it at this time?
Well, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners and Mr. Harlecker, I guess the way I look at it is if they've come in with something specific to have you look at, I think it is a good idea to have you, you know, affirm what the PUD requires by condition number 13, the way it is. The sign permit process is separate though. And I think what staff would be doing is evaluating that permit against the PUD and our other standards in the code. They do have an opportunity to ask for a variance as part of that process. That would end up with the Board of Adjustment of Appeals and ultimately the city council. So it's kind of an odd situation, but I think the only thing really before this commission is the fact that they've made a proposal and you'll have to just say, hey, it does not, if this is what you think, it does not comport with the PUD, which is under your purview. So I hope that makes some sense. Whether, if, if, Mr. Harlecker is asking some sort of question of me about, do, do they get, is it impossible for them to, at a later date, ask for a variance? Well, I guess that's, that's a hypothetical situation. I wouldn't want to try and delve into at this point. They're going to have to make that decision whether, you know, how to protect their legal rights. I'm not going to do that for them.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Schmalki.
Do we need to formally strike bill? Number 10, the stormwater pond must include a fountain for the PUD. I think staff has changed the recommendation on that.
Yeah, when, when we make the actual motion, we can just delete number 10.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Heikler.
I'm wondering if there's any, the commission has any more input on the determination if the use of dark gray slash brick is a significant enough change from the PUD to warrant modification?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Casey.
I'm okay with this, letting this one slide. I, I think that gray brick look is, is classy. Complements their precast panels and I don't, I think, I think it's looking good. I'm willing to go with it.
I, I also think that we have the, the ability to accept the black, black and gray brick. And I don't, I don't believe it's a major change that we need to consider any modification. Mr. Johnson, any thoughts?
I think it's a judgment call, Chair Schwartz. And I appreciate the comments of the commission. I think if you can reach a consensus on that issue, then it's going to be fine with staff.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to voice an opinion one way or the other on the gray, dark gray and black brick? Hearing none, I take it everybody's satisfied with it. So we'll just continue on with it as such. Any other thoughts, comments, commission, otherwise now would possibly be the time to make a motion. Well, you, you've been the one wanting to jump at, at making a motion.
I only tried three times. Three times is the limit.
Well, in the recommendation of Planning Commission Case 17-26, move to approve the proposed site plan with the following conditions. I list one through 14 and with, I will highlight the exclusions for clarification. So one through 14 with number nine, the PUD plan includes 16 overstorey and ornamental trees planted between them. Landscape plan must be revised to continue that pattern from the west end of the parking lot to the end of the cul-de-sac.
That needs to be, stay in there.
Okay, that's going to stay in there. Okay, so it's only then
Only number 10 that we're dropping.
Number 10 would be removed. So there would be 13 requirements instead of 14.
So
That is my re-
Conditions one through nine and then 11 through 14.
Exactly.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Nabla with a second by Schmalki. Any further discussion?
And to be absolutely clear, we are adopting conditions one through nine and 11 through 14.
Correct. All right, we have a motion, a second. No further discussion heard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the Planning Commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if so choose to do so. Thank you and congratulations and good luck. All right, Mr. Harlecker, planning case 98-54, revoke a conditional use permit for a single-family home in moderate-density residential district at 9909 East River Road, City of Coon Rapids.
This chair, excuse me, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners, this item as well as the next one kind of go in tandem. The City of Coon Rapids is proposing to revoke the conditional use permits for a single-family homes located on, on these two lots, 9909 and 9919. 9909 is this lot here. Back in 1998, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for an existing single-family residence on this lot. The property was acquired by the city. The houses were torn down and it was made part of Port River Walk. As part of the, the title work on the properties in Port River Walk, they identified the, the old conditional use permits on these two parcels. So in order to clean up the title, city is proposing to revoke the conditional use permits. Houses are no longer there. They were torn down some time ago. So staff is recommending in planning case 98-54 to revoke the conditional use permit at 9909 East River Road.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Mr. Johnson, can we do one public hearing for both these cases since they're very similar?
Chair Schwartz, sure. It's, it's been made clear that they're both on the table here, then.
All right. All right, this time I will open a public hearing in both planning case 98-54, revoking conditional use permit for a single-family home in moderate-density residential district at 9909 East River Road and in planning case 98-55, revoking a conditional use permit for a single-family home in moderate-density residential district at 9919 East River Road. Anyone wish to speak to either of these two cases? Seeing none, we will close both public hearings. Commission, we will need separate motions for each case, please.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Stevenson.
Is this, is this a decision of the planning commission or recommendation?
These are decisions.
In planning case 98-54, I move that we revoke the conditional use permit for a single-family home in the moderate-density residential district at 9909 East River Road.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Casey. Motion by Stevenson, second by Casey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This is a decision by the Planning Commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if someone so chooses.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Stevenson.
In planning case 98-55, I move that we revoke the conditional use permit for a single-family home in the moderate-density residential district at 9919 East River Road.
Second.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Schmalki. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the Planning Commission can, can be appealed to the city council within 10 days if someone so chooses. Other business? Anyone have anything else they would like to bring up at this time? Mr. Harlecker, any thing you wish to add? Any thoughts or comments on current development that's going on or plans for next month's meeting?
Yeah. Nothing new as of yet. In re-construction, the, the trucking company is still moving ahead, as is the, the hospital. Those are the two big projects going on in town. We haven't had anything come in yet for the Honda dealership. They're still working on that. The Answer in Jesus, the church over on Coon Rapids Boulevard, they have submitted permits and we're working through that, getting some, some modifications to the plans that they submitted so they were consistent with the Planning Commission's approval. Lot of building permits for roofs. That's, that's the, the big thing that they're getting out. And what we're finding out is that people are also, they're making the decision, well, we're getting the roof fixed, we might as well make other improvements in the house. So they're getting siding done, maybe a new deck, things like that.
Good, good. All right, commission. Motion to adjourn? Commissioner Casey?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Stevenson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.